Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. This is the City of Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Could we please have a roll call for attendance?
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Guth.
Here.
Counselor Howenstein.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Maritorie.
Here as well. We open our meeting with citizens' comments and petitions. It's an opportunity for citizens to address council on issues not scheduled for a public hearing this evening, and we do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes so that everybody has a fair and equal opportunity to speak. Are there any members of the public to address council this evening? Tony?
Is there anyone else, or am I it?
You're up.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Toni Kronberg, and I'd like to make some points or comments about the Castle Creek Bridge and the entrance to Aspen. And I'd like to applaud the city council here in Aspen because you're working towards a solution. And what surprised me is that some of the fighting has already started amongst different factions in the community. And I was hoping that the people that have asked for the environmental impact study would honor the process to get there, because what we're looking for is a solution, not what happened twenty years ago, what could happen another twenty years, but a real solution. And I apologize for the community that's already throwing, like, monkey wrenches into the process, because, one, Castle Creek Bridge, you don't know what's going on with that until CDOT comes back with their report, and then whatever happens with that, and then Marault Open Space, it's premature, because you really don't know what you're going to be asking people, how you're going to cross the Marault, what kind of roadway. And then, as you know, I was a candidate for Picking County Commissioner, and I didn't expect to win the election, and I went into it with eyes full open, but I went into it because of Highway eighty-two. Not one elected official, Snowmass, even Aspen, except for Castle Creek Bridge and the Marault, has tried to tackle the safety and efficiency of all of Highway eighty-two. And I said at the very beginning, it doesn't really make a difference if I win or lose. It would've been nice to have that paycheck and that salary, but my goal was to kickstart Highway eighty-two, starting with Smith Hill Road. And the last time I was here, I said, we accomplished five things since I did announce my candidacy in April. One was Smith Hill Road, that looks like we're going to move forward with the Michigan left-hand turn, and then the next step would be a roundabout in that location. The Michigan left-hand turn, we can do that next year. The roundabout would require an EIS. Then the next thing is that you pulled a ballot question on the Marault Open Space to really study and understand the different options and what will work to move people in and out. Then Lazy Glen, where Mike Farrar was killed, that there's an acceleration lane that's bringing, will probably be started next summer. And then the Aspen Aerial Connection, that got a really good kickstart during the campaign. And the twin bridges to connect the Aspen Airport Business Center and Brush Creek going across the Rio Grande, that finally, after over ten years, that that was approved for funding for the design. So this morning, seven twenty-eight, first alert, Brush Creek Road, one lane, down to one lane because of an accident. Next alert, Aspen, accident alert, all day long, it just lifted. Driving into town right now from the Aspen Recreation Center, traffic backed up all the way to the courthouse. And so, as I said, my commitment to the community, I said, I'm not going to stop on my efforts for Highway eighty-two, and that this is the kickstart. And so, when I heard of all those things, I could not resist but bring in my two little posters. And this is Aspen Highway eighty-two Sky Cab, and these are all the connections, Rafta, Aspen U B Park, Buttermilk, Picking County Airport, Brush Creek Park and Rides, Snowmass and Highlands. And I'd like to thank Tori especially and the rest of the council. At the last EOTC meeting, there was some discussion about funding the first part of the feasibility study, twenty-five thousand, to see if we still have a corridor that's available. And as I said, when I ran for Picking County Commissioner, I wanted to kickstart Highway eighty-two and the Aspen Aerial Connection, and that's going to get started. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you very much, and again, I apologize, because we're supposed to be working together as a community to come up with solutions, and that, all these ballot questions that are way premature, that it's more divisive than anything else. But again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. My board just fell over. Okay, there we go. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Other members of the public for public comment this evening? Come on up. Ben, how you doing?
How are you?
Good, thank you. State your name for the record, then?
My name is Ben Wolf. I'm the general manager at Frius Properties of Aspen. We manage a bunch of vacation rentals and HOAs. And as the HOA, or as the STR permit renewal process has begun this week, I was reminded of the form, the HOA compliance affidavit, that every person renewing their permit has to get signed off on by the HOA. And for every single permit, every single year, they email their HOA manager. We happen to be probably the largest one in Aspen, so we get the bulk of these emails to sign off on the HOA compliance affidavit that has to be submitted as part of the permit renewal every year. So this is now the third year that we'll be doing this. It's a pretty inefficient process. You know, we get the PDF in different formats. Sometimes it's fillable, sometimes we have to print it, sometimes we can fill it on Adobe, but nonetheless, it creates a lot of extra work. And I'm wondering, I could understand if, in the initial permit, not the renewal, that they wanted the HOA to sign off, but it just seems like a lot of repetitious work that is not necessary. And, you know, at the end of the day, even if the city grants somebody a permit, if the HOA has a policy around short-term rentals, the HOA can enforce that policy regardless of whether the city issued a permit or not. So I know you're reviewing STR guidelines a little bit maybe later today or tonight, maybe more in the new year. So I would ask that you consider that process and the amount of effort it takes for an HOA manager to comply with all those requests, and maybe create a more efficient process or get rid of that HOA compliance affidavit altogether.
And I assume the HOA compliance just means checking to see that the HOA doesn't have prohibition against?
Yeah.
The STR. Correct. It's just kind of that one box to check.
And again, my point on that would be, even if the HOA does not allow STRs and the city granted an STR permit, the HOA would have the right to stop those STRs per their HOA rules. So.
Thank you. Yeah.
Ben, thanks for your insight on that. You did mention that you're aware that we're discussing an update to the STR guidelines tonight. Did you review that update, proposed update at all?
I did, but I don't believe that is part of it.
Understood. Does that update, does that update address any of the concerns that you addressed, or that you brought up last time, or items that you suggested for enhancements to the STR program?
No, I think it's, those updates are more just clarifications on the process for those that are applying or looking to get a permit. Yeah, I was going to replant the seed about some of my past comments about reconsidering the caps in the RMF zone specifically. I don't think that's being discussed as part of these guideline updates, but perhaps it's something to remain on the table.
Yeah, thanks. And was there anything in those guideline updates that gave you concern?
Concern, no.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Other members of the public for public comment this evening? And a last call for public comment tonight. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Council members' comments this evening? Sam, none for you? John, I'll go your direction?
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the fall, very warm fall we've had recently and the fires that are still being, burning on the east coast. This is from CNN, titled, "It's Not Just You: Fall Hasn't Really Felt Like Fall This Year, and It's a Sign of Things to Come." The average temperature across the lower forty-eight this fall is more than seven degrees Fahrenheit above normal as of November fifteenth. The warmest fall on record in 2016 was four point oh four degrees warmer than average. This fall will likely finish cooler than seven degrees above normal with storms on the way this week, but it's still been the warmest start to fall on record. "It's Not the Fall Weather of Past Generations," said Shell Winkley, a meteorologist with the nonprofit research group Climate Central. "Fall has not gone completely, but I think that this fall especially shows it us that it is a shrinking season. Fall has warmed by two and a half degrees Fahrenheit on average since nineteen seventy in the lower forty-eight, according to data from Climate Central. It's happening faster in the southwest and in the Rockies, but every region of the country has warmed because of climate change. That's a, summer warmth is starting earlier during spring months and lasting later into the start of fall, eating away at both seasons, according to Winkley. That's exactly what happened this year. Summer-like heat dominated the first two months of the season in September and October, fueling the record pace of warmth." And that leads to an article from the New York Times. An essay titled "Wildfires in New York City: Something Has Changed." Red Flag Warnings in New England Indicating Fire Weather. That is, hot, dry, windy conditions have been issued repeatedly since late October. These warnings are common in the West, but they are extremely rare in the Northeast. Where I grew up and where my baseline was established, my notion of what normal weather is, and I can tell you, this isn't normal. Back in the nineteen seventies, the idea of wildfires along the I ninety-five corridor in November was simply inconceivable. We're being reminded the hard way that we share this world. Smoke knows no boundaries, and neither does fire. It's not the southern problem or a western problem, it's our shared reality. This is not just a quote-unquote "bad" year. Globally, 2023 was the hottest year in recorded history, and that record is already being broken. This year is on track to be not only one of the driest autumns in U.S. history since records have been kept, but also the first full year in which global temperatures rose one point five degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels. That doesn't sound like much, but when this kind of elevated heat is prolonged, it stresses natural systems, killing marine creatures and making forests and grasslands more flammable. Thanks through the relentless burning of fossil fuels, we are right now, in real time, departing the Holocene epoch, the Goldilocks Zone of relative climate stability that enabled us to build the world as we know it over the last twelve thousand years. We must recognize this moment for what it is, the beginning of a new era of civilizational retreat, contraction, and consolidation. Call it the post-Holocene. Climate scientists have seen this coming since the nineteen fifties, and petroleum companies have been denying and deflecting the unwanted attention ever since. Failure of imagination is a human specialty. This perceptual glitch, which Nassim Nicholas Taleb calls the, quote, "lucrious problem," unquote, after the Roman poet and philosopher, occurs when we base our estimation of possible future extremes on limited past experience. This was a signal feature of the response to this 2016 Fort McMurray-Alberta fire, which drove the largest, most rapid evacuation from a wildfire in modern times. Despite two years of drought, two weeks of intense heat, detailed weather forecasts predicting extreme fire weather, and the presence of five wildfires around the city, the first evacuees were alerted not by authorities, but by their neighbors, family members, and fires in their own backyards. And because, I'm not quoting from any newspaper articles now, that was, again, from the New York Times. Again, the fires up in Jasper, Alberta, and in Rudos, in New Mexico, really got me thinking about fire danger and what could happen here. And again, this is why I'm pleased to be part of Aspen City Government, because we take the threats to the environment seriously, and we are working towards solutions. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Bill, comments this evening?
Yeah, thanks. Two quick things. One, I wanted to thank Mike Harrington for an unbelievable effort to bring Jerry Seinfeld to Aspen. He happens to be here tonight. Thank you, Mike. I think it's just going to be a great relaunch of the Wheeler and all the work that's going on there. I recently toured the project, and it's, I think it's a new era for Wheeler and going to allow them to do more and better things. And I'm just excited for the relaunch and reinvigorating the Aspen Laugh Fest, which I hope that will continue to draw similar type of performers in the future. And I hope that that's a benefit for our community, a benefit for businesses, and draws people here specifically for that event. And then, sort of in a broader sense, with Thanksgiving next week, I just wanted to thank the whole Aspen community, the City of Aspen staff that worked so hard to implement our interests and policies and desires, and the whole community at large. Thank you, and I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Bill. Just to dovetail on Bill's comments about the Wheeler, don't forget that people can sign up for the Wheeler Insiders Pass. I believe it's a twenty-dollar fee, but it gets you access to a lot of great shows and some discounts on different shows. It's a way of giving our appreciation to the locals here that support Wheeler and the cultural arts. So get over to the Wheeler and grab your pass. I have a couple announcements today. Let's see. The first thing I wanted to make recognition of is the new speed sign that was placed at Aspen and Hyman Streets. Coming down the hill from Aspen Street into Main Street, there's a little bit of a hill there as you approach the traffic light. We've had a lot of people going a little bit faster there than the in-town speed limit of fifteen miles an hour. So we've put up one of those, this is your speed signs with the radar to tell you how fast you're going. It's noticeable. And I just want to say thank you so much to our engineering department, I think, or the people that deployed it. And so, just thank you so much. I think that's great. I don't know if there's others that are deployed yet in the city, but I think it's really a great step forward, and I look forward to having a couple more of those. Cemetery Lane would probably be a great place for one. But thank yous. Let's see. I wanted to let people know that there is an extension of the deadline for the Youth Arts Vibrancy Program. So if you know any kids out there that are interested in doing art and participating in the Arts Vibrancy Program, you can get more information by going to aspen.gov and look at the Strategy and Innovation Office page. That's where you're going to find this. The SIO page is going to, is where the Arts Vibrancy application is. So please, we have a couple more spots left. If you know any kids that are interested, I believe it's a seven hundred and fifty dollar grant that goes towards producing art and making some great friends and mentors in the program. There's also a grant deadline for our nonprofit partners in our community. That is also December fifth. So the Youth Arts Vibrancy, December fifth, and our grant process for nonprofits is also December fifth. I wanted to let people know that there is the new MAP Aspen, a new GIS tool that we are sharing with the public. It's an open data site. Tomorrow in the ProPass conference room, that's here at City Hall on third floor, from eleven to one, will be a little get-together to let people know how to use it, what it's available for, and how it can benefit you or your business or others. So please, stop by eleven to one tomorrow for the unveiling of MAP Aspen. For more information on all these things, you can go to aspen.gov. I wanted to make one announcement about the Entrance to Aspen survey that has been sent out. And Tony, thank you so much for your words about working together collaboratively as a community. This survey is intended to just take the temperature of our community. I will tell you that we got that survey out last week, so it should be arriving for people to take part in. We encourage everybody to share your voice on this important issue. One item on it, though, late entry into the conversation perhaps, is the Modified Split Shot, as it's called. So as you'll see in the survey, there are still some open-ended or unanswered questions about it. For example, at the cemetery lane light, would that be a traffic light, or could that be a roundabout? That is still up for design and up in the air. As well as the traffic light at Seventh and Main, there are renderings that have no traffic light there. So there are still possibilities, and I think that's true with really all the renderings. What you see are what's put forth. There will be amendment, no matter which alternative it is, but please, go in there, fill it out. What we intended to do there was to try to get some values and goals statements from the community about what they're looking for in this, not the exact solution, but what you're looking for as a community. So again, if you receive that either by, let's see, it's going out by mailing, and there will also be phone calling follow-ups. So please, participate in the survey. It's going to help us a lot as we move forward. Those are my comments for this evening, and I don't see any agenda amendments tonight. And city managers' comments tonight? Sarah? Thank you. And a moment for board reports. Would anybody like to share a board report? Brief opportunity to just update the public on the meetings that we have outside of council.
Ward and I went to APSHA. Do you want to cover that, Ward?
I'm looking through my notes. Go ahead, and I'll find my notes for it, and if I have something to add, I'll peg onto it.
Okay. I didn't take many notes, but we did go over our strategic plan, reviewed hearing officer applications, and we also reviewed our seller standard updates, which means an inspection must be part of a listing when you sell your unit. And that's all I've got from APSHA.
Yeah, we had discussions of the five-year strategic plan that we want to complete by the end of March, so that all people that are seeking on the APSHA board had input into what the next five, next five-year plan will look like. And had a pretty interesting discussion about how to keep the, to take care of the assets that we have and discuss some different possibilities, and one of which was actually having a department of the city or of APSHA to handle maintenance and repairs of the thirty-two-hundred units that have to compete with the free market for any kind of improvements or repairs that are performed on the rental and ownership units. We're going to be looking at that going into, into the new year. I know it's an idea that has been discussed in the past, but the problem is that all the repairs and work on de-restricted units have to compete against the free market for plumbers on Red Mountain and electricians. And so their units are subsidized at purchase, but they're not subsidized for maintenance. And I think the end result of that is that some of the assets that we have have deteriorated, and it's our interest and the interest of the board, so that each, when each unit turns over, is sold, that it meets the standards that have been established by APSHA. And one of the ideas that was discussed was to have APSHA actually purchase the unit, bring it up to the standards, and then resell it, and have seed money perhaps to keep the program going so that the units are actually brought up to the selling standard. Those are discussions that will be continuing, and probably we'll have a discussion at City Council about some of those ideas when we have a quarterly meeting relating to the APSHA with City Council. I think that covers, we had an executive session to discuss some legal issues, but we'll keep that in the balance of the executive session. Thank you.
Bill?
Ward, any progress on the financial incentives for leaving the program or rightsizing?
You know, Bill, that's been a tremendous, a lot of barriers to gain with the rightsizing, but we were starting with senior units of APSHA's, this was brought up a couple of meetings ago, and it's gaining traction. APSHA's already had a meeting with some of the owners that are retirees with incentives for them to move out of the system, sell their unit at their, at the best price, maximum price, but then incentivize them to move out of the program. So it's along those lines, Bill, that we're looking at gaining units by having people leave the, leave the program entirely. Some of the barriers for the rightsizing have been moving from one, one-size unit in a complex to another, extinguishing loans, rewriting loans, categories. There are all kinds of problems that we've run into. We had one voluntary success, I think, with the rightsizing, but it's, it's presenting a lot more barriers than we had hoped. But thanks for asking.
That makes sense, and I'm happy to pursue just the, the sort of retirement and leaving the, leaving the system approach first. And if you have support of the APSHA board, I would just encourage you to push harder and set deadlines and try to get this thing implemented sooner rather than later, if you could.
It was rolling already, and there is tremendous interest in the board, and I think staff is on board with it. This is something that was brought up, what John, at the previous meeting, and already we've had an APSHA meeting with some of the retirees, so I think it's, has great potential.
Great. Thanks for your work on it.
Thanks. You know, I have a lot of questions around that. I still don't know necessarily the desire there. We talked about moving retirees out. I don't know if we're trying to, you know, lower the median age or something, or if this is a play just so that it's for workforce housing or the like, but I still have a lot of questions around that kind of program and what it says and what it means to our community. Sarah?
This idea was brought forward by retirees, not, the idea is not to get rid of people, senior people in the system, but if people want to move out, that, the idea was brought forward to me through somebody that lives in workforce housing and on the verge of retirement. And they feel that the program has served them well, and that it's time for them to move along and make it available to younger people. So if this is a voluntary, it's not, it hasn't been forced upon anybody. It was brought to, to my attention, I brought it to the APSHA board attention, through a retiree that would be interested in leaving their workforce housing unit to younger working people.
I understand that part, but it's the options of retaining them in our community or not. So it's, you know, it may be a choice, but it may be a difficult, and it may be not an easy choice. But nonetheless, Sarah, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that this is in the information gathering stage, not in a program formulation stage. The work of talking with seniors is actually focus groups, where there can be some pretty in-depth conversations on the pros, cons, concerns, and benefits from the perspective of current owners and renters who fit that age category. So I think it's very early in that process right now, and so I wouldn't draw any conclusions at this time about the feasibility of the program or the design of the program.
Yeah, thank you for that. Other board reports? John, any others?
Nope. Nor to council tomorrow.
I'll just report back on Rafta, which was last week. Primarily, we are in budget season, so we go through our budget and look at, this is the third draft. We are looking to approve that budget in our next meeting. We had a couple other resolutions around things like Twenty-seventh Street underpass down in Glenwood, the Glenwood Transit Center, things like that. But there was also discussion, I wanted to let council know and the community know, that I have volunteered for a first-last-mile mobility advisory committee. So we are meeting, in addition to Rafta meetings, taking on another meeting a month to look at first-and-last-mile mobility and accessibility. I think that is especially pertinent on a day like today. I would also tie this into being very pleased today to see the City of Aspen text message that I received that was talking about road conditions and accident warning. I thought that was really great, that we're getting that kind of message out last night and this morning.
Last night and this morning, snow was a warm snow. It was wet. When it hits the ground, it sticks, it becomes icy. The roads were nasty. But nonetheless, at RFTA, we'll be participating in first and last mile mobility committee in order to look into greater accessibility for our valley and RFTA. With that board reports, we'll get to consent calendar. Consent calendar this evening is resolution number 139. Approval for vacation of easement at property at 301 South Seventh Street. And that is our only item on consent this evening. Do any council members have questions or comments on this item? If not, I could take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar this evening?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Maritorie?
Yes. Thank you.
Nice to see you, Sarah.
Public hearings, our first public hearing this evening is ordinance number 16. This is the City of Aspen Fall supplemental on second reading.
Thank you, mayor and council. Matt Grau, Budget Manager for the city. As mentioned last week, there's only one change from first reading. It's the addition of $56,119 in revenue and an equal amount of expenditure authority for the insurance claim and repairs of the nine vandalized EV charging stations. Otherwise, no additional changes from first reading. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 16 and the adoption of the 2024 Fall Supplemental, increasing the City of Aspen 2024 budget by 6.9 million and the adoption for an increase of $48,600 at Aspen Mini Storage Fund.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, but are there any council questions first?
I would just say, good job, Matt. I haven't seen a supplemental that I didn't have significant issues or questions with until this one.
Very good.
Thanks for the clarity.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 16, the City of Aspen Fall Supplemental Budget, second reading. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment this evening? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council's table and allow for a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 16, series of 2024.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number 16, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Maritorie?
Yes, thank you very much. Your supplemental passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir.
Ordinance number 17, City of Aspen 2025 Fee Ordinance. This is also second reading.
Once again, Matt Grau, Budget Manager, here for second reading, ordinance 17. We did want to bring back to mayor and council some kind of data points on the question you asked about parking fees. So thank you to Tyler and Blake for assisting me with getting some data. Just wanted to remind the public and council that there's actually no changes to the parking fees for 2025. They remain unchanged minus the additional towing fees and impounds that were approved in the 2025 budget. Based on research with an industry vendor, municipalities aim for a collection rate of about 45% of their citations. City of Aspen has greatly exceeded industry standards with an 85% to 90% collection rate. So the uncollected rate has averaged about 9% over the last five years. Staff continues to improve their customer experience and to facilitate improvements. Have started adding unique QR codes to the bottom of each citation starting this past January. Upon scanning the code, the individual can quickly and easily pay their citation without the need to access a computer for the online portal or visit the parking office in person. That option has been well received and the immediate payment options already account for about 3% of overall annual parking revenue. So based on this, at this time, staff doesn't recommend a change to the parking fee structure for 2025.
Understood. Just for clarity, remember I was asking about losses of unclaimed or unpaid parking citations. Our recoup rate here is very well done, very successful. So it's not the same situation that we've seen in the past. Second to that, what I was suggesting was some sort of quick pay opportunity for people that can take care of their ticket on the same day in order to save them some money. That will come up at another time if there's any interest in that. I don't know how council feels about our local parking enforcement and how it impacts the local residents. So don't need to pursue that now. I appreciate the information update. It also doesn't warrant a new program to kind of mitigate for some of that lost revenue. So I appreciate the information that you've brought back.
Otherwise, no changes were recommended at first reading for ordinance 17, the fee ordinance for 2025. So staff recommends approval of the proposed fee ordinance.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Bill, start with you.
Yeah. Sorry. There is something that I think we need to discuss, which is right of way encroachment fees. And those are being proposed to increase within the core from $9 a square foot per month to $20 a square foot per month and outside of the core from $7 a square foot per month to $20 a square foot per month. And I believe these fees would take effect as they're structured right now, basically immediately. This could be a very significant financial, unexpected financial change to someone who's in the midst of construction. And these dollars are very significant. You know, when you multiply this by, you know, 500 or 1,000 square feet that somebody might be encroaching on necessarily during the course of construction. I also want to, you know, from my perspective, I think that this, this would apply during these water line replacements that we were talking about last week that are unfortunately being, you know, kind of forced on unlucky residents that might have a galvanized water line, or I'm sorry, a lead, lead water line. I think that this is a lot of money. It's a tremendous increase, 122%, 185% respectively. I don't see a real need for this. The city doesn't need this money. I don't think that we have a particular problem with right of way encroachments throughout the course of construction. And I really think that we should consider leaving where this where it is or a much smaller increase and/or a phased implementation of the increase.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest you come back to that after a public hearing.
Will do. Sam, did you have any comments, sir?
It was amen to Bill's comments.
Ward?
Yeah, I'll revisit this, but we'll go through the public hearing part first as Sarah recommended.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? This is a public hearing on ordinance number 17. This is the City of Aspen Fee Ordinance on second reading. Are there any members of the public to comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Chris Bryan. I'm a local attorney. I spoke to you about these fee increases in 2019. Not sure who among you were there. But I attached the minutes to the letter that I submitted via public comment yesterday. So I hope you've had a chance to read my two-page letter and then the minutes from the November 26, 2019 meeting. And I hereby incorporate those written submissions that I sent to the clerk and the city attorneys and yourselves into the public record. I think it's absolutely a shame that there's no rational basis for this. There's been no explanation by staff. There's been no mathematical analyses. There's been no studies. We don't even understand where $20 came from. Was that pulled out of thin air? Because it feels arbitrary and capricious to go from $7 or $9 all the way up to 20. As a reminder, the last time you did this in 2016, you went from, what was it, $6.50 to $6.93? You own it by 43 cents? And now you're going up by 13 or $11 per square foot per month? So I'm not going to read you my letter because I'll presume you did that. But I will take issue with the first reading memo that was at the last meeting, where the staff said that this is to encourage limited use and to align use in an equitable manner with parking spaces. But you're treating parking spaces for construction work differently than you're treating parking spaces for non-construction work. And by the way, encouraging limited use, owners already are incentivized to be in and out as quickly as possible. But there are reasons that they have to have encroachments. Part of that is safety. Part of that is construction management plans that the city mandates. Part of that are delays that are caused by substantial and minor amendments, change orders. We all know that the city takes longer than most to review permit applications and especially change orders and inspections. So the incentive argument doesn't really add up because the owners already have the proper incentives. And I don't understand what align use in an equitable manner with parking spaces means when your rates do precisely the opposite. A parking space for non-construction is $40 a day and for construction it's $100 a day? That doesn't seem equitable to me. And in your second reading memo, that's in tonight's packet, the explanation, the one-sentence explanation given by the engineering department is, we're doing this to align with our cost recovery. What costs are you recovering? What costs are you spending? The owner, the developer, the builder, the contractor has to take care of the right of way, has to take care of snow removal, has to be sure to clear it up debris, to put planners there at their own expense. What is the city spending on? Now, this is a fee, you call it an encroachment fee, but you know that fees cannot exceed the overall direct and indirect cost of the services provided. What services are you providing for $20 per square foot per month? I'd like an answer to that. We know, and I know that you know, because the City of Aspen won a lawsuit in 2017 on its bag fee on precisely this issue, on the difference between a fee and a tax. I'll add that the City of Aspen was very well represented in that case. Now, there are no costs here to recover and definitely not 180% of what is being charged now. Are you giving 180% more services than you were a month ago? And in January, you're going to give 180% more services? Doesn't sound like it. It sounds like it's a money grab. And I'd like to know why, because right now, in your packet and in your memo and in the explanations we've heard from staff, there's no math, there's no explanation, there's no studies, there's no analyses. The parking space should be charged the same, whether it's for construction or non-construction. And this is not an academic point. This has real-world consequences for people because if they plan and budget their construction projects, they go in there knowing what their fees are going to be. And when you pull the rug out from under them in the middle of a project and jack them up by 180%, that throws a lot of things out of whack. And that makes millions of dollars for the city. I understand why the city wants to do it, but that doesn't make it right. If you wanted to keep up with 10% inflation, your rates would go from $9 to $9.90, not from $9 to $20 per square foot per month. And the city does face legal peril if it doesn't do the right thing here and amend this part of the ordinance. Because with millions of dollars of fees hanging in the balance and the patent unfairness that that presents, I guarantee you that numerous owners and developers and contractors will refuse to pay these new extraordinarily onerous fees and then will take you to court to argue about it. And that's not a good use of your time or money. So I would encourage you to do the right thing here and change this part of the ordinance. Keep it as it is or even go down and make it on par with what you make it for parking spaces, for non-construction purposes. And if you wanted to increase it at all, 10% inflation gets you up to $9.90 in the core and $7.70 outside the core. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public to comment on ordinance number 17 this evening? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Ward?
Yeah, I acknowledge that you've received Chris Bryan's letter and find myself in agreement, but I think just about everything he said. So I'm feeling a little bit dizzy here, but thank you, Chris. I prefer to look at this by the cost of the revenue generated by parking spaces in the core and residential. And I agree to charge $100 for a commercial space, $40 for a regular car in that same space. Doesn't seem as though it's giving equal treatment, equal protection to both parties. So I would, I would recommend that the fees for parking in residential they use be what they are now for resident, for regular residents, at $8 a day. And that the fee for parking in a commercial downtown core fee generated for the three different, four, six, and $4 at different times a day. If a parking spot is fully utilized during the day, it's $40. I started off with $40 and in discussions with the mayor had, he brought up some points that from 6 o'clock until 10:00 or something at night, those parking spaces that are being used by commercial operations are being deprived of the public for use. And so I could see increasing the, as a cost to the community of maybe between $10 and $16 for four hours to increase the commercial from $40 to maybe $50 or $56. But I don't see, again, Chris, I agree with, I think everything you said and your math on it is good. And you increased the cost. And I look back at my comments in 2019 on this and I had the same comments then that I feel now. To increase the fees in the middle of a building project doesn't seem right. Our workforce housing mitigation is applied at the time of application and it seems as though the fees for parking in the right of way should also maintain the same amount throughout the process, the building process. And I think that Chris made some arguments he did not allude to in public comments, but these prices are going to be passed along to the developer. The developer is going to pass along to whoever rents or buys or leases the space. And they're going to pass it along to the people that are buying the services or goods that are for sale in those spaces. So what this is, is inflationary and the people that are paying for it are the end users and our tourists and our local population. So I would, I would amend this that the commercials should be, I can talk about this, but I would say $40, but at the most $56. And I would put the construction and residential at $8 to align with what it is for a resident or a normal, are using that space. So I don't want to make a differentiation between construction use and the regular, regular use of those spaces. I think that's, that's what's fair and I think equal protection mandates that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. I want, unfortunately, we're going to have to tease this out a little bit. Let's be clear first about what we're talking about. In the downtown core, just so everybody's on the same page. In the downtown core, we charge for parking between 10:00 and 6:00 o'clock. In the early morning and the late afternoon, that is $4 an hour. In the middle of the day, it is $6 an hour. For a total of those eight hours coming out to be $40 of fee, parking fees for a parking spot downtown. I don't see anybody shaking their head no yet. Okay. So it's $40 if somebody, and I, actually, I don't think you're really necessarily wanting to or allowed that, I think you have a four-hour maximum maybe downtown. Anyway, so it's $40 if you want to park your car for all day when we charge. It is $100 for a construction project to block that same spot off per day. Now, some of what I just heard was, why are those different? And those should be the same. But those- But those are different because construction blocks off not only the parking spot, but the space in between. So, we are also, and we'll get there, we're also talking about the space in between a building and that parking spot, uh, public right-of-way, sidewalks, and the like. Okay. But let's just stick with the forty dollars. It's forty dollars a day for people who are visiting downtown, shopping downtown, eating downtown, and the like, or working downtown even. For construction, it is utilized for building operations, and it is blocked off twenty-four hours a day. So, so the hundred dollars a day for a construction occupation occupying a parking spot, I think is a different situation. They are not par, there's not parity there. Um, what I was talking to Ward about today, and just thinking about this, and, and, you know, was that w- we have parking enforcement till six P M. But our parking is utilized, and there's extreme high demand during the evening. So, just because we can't police it and, and char, and do parking enforcement after six P M doesn't mean that those spaces don't have value to the public. So, again, I say that, that if there's a construction project that is using those and depriving public and downtown users, patrons, that hurts other people. That hurts the local businesses that are downtown. So, a- a- and it, it impacts the experience for our guests and our residents here. So, so first of all, I would like to say, I do see a difference between twenty-four occup, twenty-four-hour occupation by a construction project versus forty dollars from somebody who is, uh, active in the downtown core. I, I, I think there is a difference there. Bill, you wanna talk about that point?
Uh, yeah, two, two things on that point. One, I would ask you, and, and just wait till I get my second point out. Um, I would ask you to clarify what you're talking about, the space between, a little bit better. I'm not sure I understand what you mean there. And secondly, uh, I, I understand your argument entirely. I understand Ward's point entirely on parking. Um, I, I, I'm wondering if, if the way to address the evening, um, post-construction hours is with signage, which, you know, all of these spots, the way we typically handle these space reservations right now is with a orange cone with a laminated sign on it. Um, it, nothing indicates right now, and you've mentioned this before, that, that those spots uh, could be available from six P M to six A M, for example. Um, no constructions allowed after six P M at any point in the year, if I'm not mistaken.
Seven P M, I think.
Seven? Um, so, you know, maybe it's seven P M onwards, or so, or, or maybe we just decide that, you know, if you wanna pay for that extra hour, which I don't think many will, um, that's where there's a big premium. And, and we, you know, most construction is done by five or six in any event, so I think most people will not have an issue with that. So, i- m- maybe that's a bit more of a management exercise than it is a fundamental, uh, pricing exercise. Um, so, that's just one point to think about there, but please clarify the space between comment.
Cool. So, uh, on your first point about that, you know, you're right. In some situations, we put out a cone with a sign in it, and it's, it's usable, and, um, it's kept space available, if you will, for those construction projects. And I do think that timed si, timed si, signage could be a help with that. Um, but, you know, we've had a couple of projects downtown, like the, I refer to it as the Bidwell Building. That's the one that was across from, that is across from, that was across from Paradise Bakery, where there is a new building going up. Uh, and they fully put out Jersey barriers out into the middle of the street and took the sidewalk as well as parking spaces. And it's been there non-stop, uh, a year and a half, or, sorry, four years is being shared with me. Four years it's been there. The other one was the Crystal Palace Building, which also had a perimeter of utilizing both the parking spots and the space in between. And the space in between is, the sidewalk was closed off. Um, and, and that's what I mean, because what we're talking about in these fees is not just the parking spots that are on the street side of the curb, but we're talking about from the curb towards the building where there is still public right-of-way. That's, that's the encroachment part, right? So, we're talking about, uh, uh, the parking spots are already defined. That's already, that's already defined. Those are forty dollars a day through the fee service on the street. If you're just a person using downtown parking, it's a hundred dollars a day for the construction because of that twenty-four-hour usage and, and, uh, unavailability to the public. But what we're talking about tonight, this is where somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if Tyler or somebody needs to come up, but what we're talking about tonight is making parity with the encroachment area of the sidewalk, those areas on par with the fee that is charged for the area of a parking spot. So, I, I think, and, and I think Trish can speak to this, but I think that when you
utilize that space for something other than parking, so if you use the Bidwell example, if you put up Jersey barriers and it's no longer used as parking, then it transforms to a right-of-way encroachment fee and no longer a daily parking fee. Is that accurate?
It's not correct. It's, it stayed, so the, in front of the curb, it, even if you put a Jersey barrier, whatever, if you're using that space, uh, that is the parking rate. So, the current rate is a hundred dollars per day, so that. All right. So, there's lots of, um, different ways to calculate this. So, square, we're, we're looking at, and, well, because we're looking at encroachments, we look at square footage instead of a parking space. So, if you wanna equate the two, um, the nine, the existing nine dollars per square foot equates to something like forty-seven dollars for a parking, like, if you, if you equate it to a parking spot. So, if you take a parking spot at a hundred dollars, that equates to nine dollars per squ, or nineteen dollars per square foot. That's how it, so, the, what we're, where we're proposing is the, the space in front of the curb is gonna stay the same. It's currently a hundred dollars, it will stay a hundred dollars, or currently paying a hundred dollars right now for that. What we're talking about is behind the curb, between the building and the curb face. So, in the core, it's typically twelve feet, like, distance-wise, um, and the length of the building, to be, to be the same pricing that we're doing for the parking spot in front, you know, from pace of curb out.
What, Trish, wouldn't, uh, a right-of-way encroachment fee also be incurred when you're going into the street to deal with utilities?
No. Um, that's, that's part of a right-of-way permit, so that's a, that's a different permit. Um, encroachment is to occupy the area, and the right-of-way permit is when you're actually, you know, excavating and digging in an area. So, that's a different, different fee, different rates, different.
And those are not proposed to change tonight?
Um, there are changes to that. I believe it's a seven percent increase in our fee structure.
That's the encroachment license and application and encroachment fees?
No, it's right-of-way.
It is seven percent, Trish, across the board for right-of-way permits.
So, there's encroachment, seven percent?
A- a- and, 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 and so here's,
Right-of-way permits?
Here's maybe, um, this is a little bit more complicated than just parking spots and forty dollars a day and a hundred dollars a day. What I've heard here is that there's some concern from some council members about deploying a new fee structure on existing projects. And, and, and it sounds like, it sounds like, it sounds like we would like a little bit more calculation and information. Uh, it doesn't sound like we're all clear exactly, but I think for tonight, maybe for tonight, we figure out how to move forward with our fee ordinance, putting this item on a, a delay on, like, like you said, the projects that are in existence that have agreements at this time, so that there's no direct impact immediately while we work this out. My interest here, you know, I gotta say, is, is that, you know, there is an impact to the public, a- and that's really what we're trying to mitigate here. W- we do want to encourage and incentivize, actually disincentivize people taking too long, but we literally, four years, we have encroachments into the right-of-way. And, and as, as Mr. Bryan was saying, yeah, things come up. Projects are delayed. We've seen it. We see them now. Um, I don't wanna go into the history around the Crystal Palace and the encroachment fees or the parking fees that they were assigned there, but it was only through this tool that, that we were able to, uh, agree and negotiate for them to, to withdraw from, uh, the right-of-way, or, or they may still be there. A- and so, you know, I, I think something does need to be done here in order to protect the public or assist the public in enjoying their public spaces. But I hear from council members that there's a concern about how fast and how much this is going right now. So, so, without trying to negotiate this or solve this at the table now, maybe there's a way that we can move forward with the fee ordinance and have this piece come back to us. I'm looking at, thank you.
Yeah, the answer is yes. You, um, in section two point twelve point oh five one, which is page, that's a great question. Mine says eight, nine of thirty-five, but I don't know in the total packet the number. Uh, what I would do is encourage council to contemplate placing an asterisk on encroachment fees that say that the effective date of any, of, of the proposed fees is at sometime at a later date in 2025. That gives you an opportunity to have a work session in early 2025, um, which certainly would then provide time for you to amend this if you felt that what is in this document is not correct. The challenge that we have is, is that the rest of this document is extremely important to the functioning of the, the municipality. And so, um, we would encourage, um, something of that nature to give you time while the remaining topics could go ahead and become effective January first.
I, I'd like to make a motion to put on the table for discussion to try to move past this. I don't, I personally don't wanna do a work session to discuss this. I don't think there's an issue here. So, uh, with your permission, I'd like to make a motion, and we can have additional discussion on it.
I, if I can get,
Sure.
Ward in first, and then we'll go for it. Uh, and John has comment, and then that'd be, that'd be great. Thanks, Bill. Ward, you go ahead, then John, and then we'll figure out.
Yeah, I, I, whatever mechanism that serves recommending on page seventy-one of our packet, um, uh, but two dot twelve dot zero five one, uh, the right-of-way, or the, uh, encroachment fees, to pull that from this, uh, ordinance, uh, to be dis, to be determined at a future date. Um, I, I, I heard Bill mention he doesn't wanna have a work session, but move this forward. I think if we just pull those encroachment fees out of this ordinance and act on that separately at a future date, that would move us forward here and gives us an opportunity to more fully understand, uh, right-of-way parking spaces, what is and what is projected.
Uh, thank you, John.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, it's not just, uh, the tourists and, and locals that are impacted by these, by, uh, right-of-way incursions. It's, uh, also our local merchants and commercial operators. They're, they're not, i- it's harder for guests to find parking to frequent their businesses. So, um, I, I do agree with some of, most of the points Chris Bryan made, but I also think that, uh, this isn't just about the parking spaces, obviously. And one example would be the current, uh, I think it was called the Segwin Building between White House Tavern and the former La Casino Building. Um, there's been a crane parked out in front of it for several days, and the sidewalk's been blocked off. And I, I gotta think that is affecting, uh, the White House Tavern's business a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you for comments. Uh, Bill, you wanna try a motion?
Yeah, with your blessing.
Yeah, I, I, you're, you're more than welcome to.
Thanks. Uh, so, to, I wanna be careful that we're bifurcating both the, the core parking fees and the, um, encroachment, I'm sorry. The, uh, yes, encroachment fees per square foot. Is that the correct terminology? Okay. So, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve ordinance seventeen with the following modifications. Um, I, I'd like to modify, uh, the all-day reserved parking spaces for both construction and non-construction uses to be eighty dollars per day, both on parity with one another, a hundred percent premium over our current parking rates, acknowledging your, your, uh, concerns that that is a different use. And then I would propose, um, leaving the core per square foot per month construction, uh, uh, encroachment fees at nine dollars and outside of the core at seven dollars.
I shall second that.
Uh, okay, so the first part of it was, uh, you wanna raise in-town parking fees? The parking rates?
So.
For both parking or construction, bring them both to eighty dollars?
So, this is for reserved parking spaces only. There, right now, to reserve a parking space, depending on your use, there's two different rates. One is forty dollars, one is a hundred dollars. Is that accurate?
I, I would defer to.
Yes. Okay. I'm proposing making those equal and setting them at eighty dollars each per day of reserved parking. So, I'm not talking about changing the hourly parking rates at all.
Right.
I'm suggesting eighty dollars per day to, to mitigate against the different use that you nicely described.
Right.
Um, so both of those would now be eighty dollars. So, that would result in a forty-dollar increase for a non-construction use, uh, for a reserved parking space, and a twenty-dollar decrease for a construction use per parking space, making those equal.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand what is, exactly is being amended. I think it's pretty clear that the engineering department fee, um, two point one, two point oh five one, um, the, the fees in that table would remain what they currently are, nine and seven. Instead of two twenties in this table, it'd be returned to the nine and the seven. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But the parking fee that you're discussing, I wanna make sure I know where that is in the.
I, I'm not sure it's in the table, Jim. Uh, thank you for pointing this out because it's not proposed for change. Uh, but I would say that we need to make an amendment to the ordinance to effectuate that change.
Okay, so it's not in the current table, but it would be for parking fees?
Parking fees for reserved spaces.
Reserved spaces, it would be added as a separate, um, line item?
But you could add it to the table, or you could add language to the ordinance.
Can you take a look at Jim, at section two point one, two oh zero six, parking fees?
That's what I've got here, and I'm not sure where it belongs in there. Do you guys, does he, I don't know, I'm sure. It's what?
Page twelve.
Miscellaneous.
I guess you could add it there. You could add two new rows there.
Well, you wouldn't need to. I think your construction.
Clarity on is, is the construction residential is at forty dollars a day. Construction commercial is at a hundred dollars a day. Um, my recollection is either of those numbers increases. My recollection is no, but I'm looking.
No.
Correct. So, these are the fees that have been in place, um, for at least two years, is my recollection, maybe even.
That's right. I'm proposing a change to this.
So, you would reduce commer, construction commercial per day to, from one hundred to eighty?
Yeah, I don't know where you're seeing this, but yes.
We're on, um, page twelve of the ordinance itself.
Ordinance, thank you.
Twelve of thirty-five.
One second, Ward.
Seventy-four of our, of our packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a different system.
Okay.
I think you're right. Keep going, Jim. I'll find it.
Um, well, I'm just trying to, it's pretty clear your motion would include amending the fourth line of that construction commercial per day from one hundred to eighty. I'm not sure what the next step was.
Construction, yeah.
Miscellaneous parking.
So, that's right. Um.
Miscellaneous parking, the fourth.
Twelve of thirty-five.
Yep.
The miscellaneous parking section, so the third row, construction residential slash day would increase to eighty. The second, uh, the row below that, construction commercial slash day would decrease from one hundred to eighty.
Okay. All right. I think I understand the motion now.
Okay.
Maybe if we could fully restate the motion for the record, please.
Sure. I will do my best. Um.
Refer to the section numbers and the title of the lines you're amending.
You got it. Uh, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number seventeen with the following amendments. Uh, number one, in section two point one, two point zero six zero of the, uh, is this the fee schedule?
Parking fees.
Of, of all fees, so, and then within the miscellaneous parking section, change the rate for construction residential per day to eighty dollars from forty dollars. Change the rate from, of construction commercial per day from one hundred dollars. Change the rate from of construction commercial per day from one hundred dollars to eighty dollars.
Section is, it's on page nine of thirty-five, section two point one two zero five one, engineering department fees. Where your other motion's at.
For for the second item, engineering department fees, two point what?
One two dot zero five one.
Two point one two point zero five one, um the base cost within the core by commercial operations associated with construction uh retain the current rate of nine dollars per square foot per month, and the rate for outside of the core by commercial operations associated with construction, retain the current rate of seven dollars per square foot per month. If someone would like to second that, restate a motion.
I'm 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 confused, Bill, on that last one where the.
So for clarity, there is a second on the floor. He was repeating his motion to clarity, should there be a call for a vote. He has changed where the two twenty dollars, he's proposing where the twenty dollars are with underneath the um in the table, encroachment fees. The last two items under encroachment fees, he um he is suggesting should be at the current level of nine dollars and seven dollars, not increased to twenty.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, uh there is a motion and a second, so it's a further discussion. Um I am not going to be able to support this motion. Um I've a a couple of questions I have about it. Uh the first one is I if I understand, you want to double the rate from forty to eighty for somebody to rent a a parking spot for residential or other uses, not construction uses.
That's not true. It is for other uses. So let's say someone needs to reserve two spots for a moving truck in front of
Right.
their store. That would apply to a non-construction use.
Great.
So yes, I am proposing a
Okay.
increase from forty to eighty for.
That does not reflect in the motion.
It 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 is, she's correct, because what you're talking about is a different section within there that says reserved spaces for approved activities.
That's why I don't think we should do this tonight, right now. What we can do is pass this fee ordinance, put an asterisk next to this, get together to have a conversation, because this touches on more than just a sidewalk fee. It touches on a lot more. A simple work session so that we can get something that moves the community forward in the best interest would probably be best here. So I I there is a motion and a second on the floor, so we're we're gonna follow through here, but um the motion is still unclear. The 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 motion's not ready yet, but it's still out there, so we have an issue with that. Now, Bill, would you, do you want to rescind your motion?
I I have a one question first, though. So am I correct is that that there is currently a different rate within commercial core parking depending on the use of the reserved parking space?
Come on up. Come on down.
Hi, Blake Fitch, City of Aspen Parking Department. So, yes, there are different fees. Construction use parking for res- reserved parking space is a hundred dollars per space per day in the downtown core. Residential is forty dollars per space per day. For non-construction parking reservations in the downtown core for like a moving truck or whatever, is fifty dollars per space per day. And in residential is twenty-five dollars per space per day.
Thank you, Blake. Can you point me to where um that fifty-dollar rate can be found?
Stage seventy-four of our packet, I think, page twelve of twenty-five of that memo. Is the is the.
Is it reserved spaces for approved activities?
Yeah. It's the one I was referring to.
Thank you. So I'd like to make an amendment to my motion. Uh I I do not want to modify the construction residential per day rate. In in place of that, I would like to propose modifying the reserved spaces for approved activities rate from fifty dollars to eighty dollars.
For clarity, it might help the council to um withdraw the original motion and to propose a new one. Can we do that at this stage? Are they?
I believe you can.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. Yeah, it it may be a little clearer for what everyone's voting on.
Great, thank you. Uh I will withdraw my motion and make a new motion to approve ordinance number seventeen with the following modifications. Thank you all for your patience in helping us and and guidance in getting this right. Modification number one, the construction rate in the downtown core, commercial per day shall, I I propose to decrease from one hundred dollars to eighty dollars. The reserved spaces for approved activities, I propose to increase from fifty dollars to eighty dollars. The um and that both of those can be found in section two point one two point zero point point zero six zero parking fees. Um the third and fourth modification I propose to make are under uh the engineering fees section.
Two point one two.
Two point one two point zero five one. Um I propose the base costs within the core by commercial operations associated with construction, dot, 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 be changed from the proposed twenty dollars to nine dollars, which is the current rate. And the rate for outside of the core by commercial operations associated with construction be changed to seven dollars versus the proposed twenty dollars, which is also the current in-place rate.
Before I do anything, Bill, I'm kind of curious um at this stage with the information we have, why to change the miscellaneous parking fees um once again with the information we have. I I guess my goal here really is to just keep the status quo, but I I don't need a work session on it. I I feel like we're trying to fix something that's not broken. Um but this feels added, and I just want you to be able to defend that.
Yeah, thank you. Um I also don't need a work session on this. I'd like to solve this tonight and and move forward. Um the the intention to raise that um approved activities rate was to bring it on parity with the construction rate. So for no other reason than that, I think a parking space reserved for twenty-four hours is a parking space reserved for twenty-four hours. Um regardless of whether that's to park a construction pickup truck or to park a moving truck, so.
As sad as I am, I I do feel some discomfort with not knowing the implications of what that means. Um so at this stage tonight, I would like to offer a friendly amendment and eliminate the miscellaneous parking change fees and come back to that potentially at a later date, maybe with information memo on what those implications would be. But I'm very much acceptable to um the keeping the fees as is.
I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
But I I still think we need a formal second.
And second to the friendly amendment, if that works, sorry.
So this is getting a little messy, so I'm gonna.
Although although, wait a minute, you you Bill, did in your in your in your motion that you just made, were you asking for construction rentals to go down to eighty from a hundred? It's currently a hundred, and he's asking to lower it to eighty, so it's not the status quo. It's not, it's not.
That's what I'm trying to get rid of. My friendly amendment is to only focus on the things that we've actually talked about versus this miscellaneous parking fees. I'm trying to just keep the fees as is.
For parking.
For for.
For both uses of parking?
Yeah.
Construction. All right, I I'll withdraw my motion and make a new clean motion. I'll uh propose to adopt ordinance seventeen with the following two modifications. Section two point one two point oh five one, the base cost within the core by commercial operations associated with construction, dot, 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 um shall remain at nine dollars per square foot per month as opposed to the proposed twenty, and the rate for outside of the core by commercial operations associated with construction shall remain at seven dollars per square foot as opposed to the proposed twenty.
Clean, I understand it, seconded.
So it is for the whole ordinance with just those amendments?
That's it. That's it.
Right?
Yeah, that that that's it, and I think that's clean and easy, and if we somehow feel like we need to come back to it, um we can, but I'd rather do it this way, just so it's uh solidified in the way that seems proper. And if we need to fix something that doesn't seem to be broken, then I'm happy to come back to it at a later date, but.
Thank you for that. Um uh not as a rebuttal, but um it it it's not that it's broken, but again, this is um public right-of-way, and so we're trying to make it available, useful uh and benefit to the entire community, and so um you know, it's I I think that I think that there are improvements to be made, because we have seen these encroachments last for years. Um and the impacts of those lasting for years, and so that's that's one of the goals of this is to you know, encourage that, to 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 get these projects going and not just sit out because they can afford it. And because um as much as was said earlier about passing on costs, um the delays that have gone on on some of these projects uh and the and the costs are are being bared by everybody, and there's the the community costs, not just the the monetary, but anyway, we're in discussion, so yes, so we have a motion, we have a second now.
And sorry, Ward, I just want to say I I respect the will, the majority will of the council, so if you three want a work session, Bill and I have expressed we don't want one, but.
Understood. Got it. Okay, Ward.
Uh well, this is um I I I appreciate trying to put this to bed now, but there have been a number of issues that I'm uh confused on. I I I understand the part about uh uh two dot twelve dot zero five one, uh maintaining the current nine dollars and seven dollars. I'm I'm confused about the miscellaneous parking that uh Sam alluded to, wanted to bring, come back to that. Um I think I I at at this time, I can't support this just because I I'm not clear on the parking versus the uh right-of-way encroachment fees. Um I I just need to, and I hate to say this, but I need to have more clarity on and more information exactly. Um I I want parity between regular parking spaces for construction and for uh every other use. Um I don't want to have separate fees for for um for the use of the of the spot. But I'm not clear on um the difference between the encroachment uh fees. I understand what that's for, but how would that like, for example, at the um Crystal Palace Building, I think that sidewalk and parking spaces are both taken. Um um so I I'm Bill, I'm sorry, I can't support it just because I have to be totally clear on what the uh encroachment fees and the parking fees are, and I want there to be parity between construction use and um non-construction use of those uh those those spaces.
All right, if if I might.
At this point, I just.
Ward, can I try to clarify for you, and and the team can correct me if I'm wrong on any point?
Just a second, Billy. Sam had mentioned about the miscellaneous parking that we've had uh discussions about. Uh to come back to that late to that later, uh but then the the motion is for only the um uh the nine dollars and seven dollars.
Correct.
Um so this discussion is getting a little lengthy a a around this issue. I'm just wanting to make sure, are we still in the framework of discussion period of motion and second? We're cool? Okay. Okay, so.
So uh uh you know, wherever this goes, Ward, I'm happy to try to clarify what the space is that the the seven and nine dollar rates are for, and and Trish mentioned it earlier, so I'm just repeating what she said. It's it's the space between the top of the curb uh or the edge of the curb, you know, where it drops down to to become a parking space and the property line at the front of the building. That's the space that we're talking about.
We're talking about sidewalks.
More or less, yes.
For the most part.
Yep. So that that's the rate that we're talking about. Trish clarified that the parking spaces are treated separately, and that's uh for construction use in the core, a hundred dollars per day. And uh for non-construction use is currently fifty dollars per space per day. And then the s- the space inside the street right-of-way is treated differently as well. So if you have to go into the street for a utility connection, that's a different fee schedule that I did not propose changing in my motion.
Whose motion stands now, the only difference, only change is the nine dollars and seven dollars uh for the uh engineering department fees under two dot twelve dot zero five one. That's the only change that's in your um um motion.
That is correct.
Yeah, it's just all the new fees and keeping the status quo on that one thing, basically.
Yeah, and I'm I'm happy to revisit talking about bringing parity to the to the parking rates. I agree with you. I'd like to see them have parity. Um Sam had some concern on on unintended consequences there, which I respect, so that's why I agreed to remove that from the motion. But I I do share your interest in um bringing parity to that, because from my perspective, whether you use it for construction or a moving truck or some other approved activity, has the same effect on the community, so I think the rate should be the same there, but but that's not part of my motion.
Would you support a friendly amendment to uh remove miscellaneous parking section from this uh ordinance seventeen for further discussion, uh to to keep your uh seven and nine dollars for the engineering fees in place, but to come back and revisit the uh parking fees for um for in the interest of parity between all uses?
I I I would support the spirit of that motion, but I'm I'm not sure it makes any sense, because that fee's not proposed to be changed under ordinance seventeen, so I I don't know how to put that into words.
I would say that that's the motion on the floor already. That is the motion, Ward.
To keep it as. But isn't construction uh fees, construction parking for a commercial day is a is currently a hundred and is going to remain at a hundred?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was taken out. That that was rescinded.
For the parking spot.
Yeah.
Not for the encroachment. That's per parking spot.
Now, just Sam said something I want to be careful about. The ordinance right now has construction commercial slash day, a hundred dollars. That doesn't change. That's not part of this motion. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We took that, the change, we took the change out, and we simplified it.
Yes, so.
The status quo of those two fees and everything else.
And I would finally point out that you can always revisit these these figures anytime during the year. You can amend this at a later date. Right now, the goal is to make certain we have some in place and adopted by January first. Okay, then then if I may, Trish, could you confirm that uh construction, that under miscellaneous, the third and fourth lines are unchanged from what they are currently?
It would be Blake who needs to confirm the forty dollars per day for construction residential and hundred per day for construction commercial.
Yeah, those those fees are staying the same, and we did not, as for parking, put those in for a fee ordinance change this year.
Okay, Billy, I can support that, but I do want to make parking parity on this um miscellaneous parking at a future date.
Me too.
Me three.
Um so we're still in discussion, John.
Um yeah, I I just want to move this forward and uh try to avoid the situations that Mr. Ryan was illustrating earlier. Um I would say that, you know, with with supply chain issues and all the costs of construction going up, um I can see where the city would want to raise the rates for this, so uh I don't know, this is a tough one. It suddenly got pretty complicated.
Thanks. Uh my discussion, I'm not going to support this. Um Bill, I would have preferred if you'd included even the ten percent uh increase that uh Mr. Brian had alluded to earlier. Um I you guys are talking about parity between um construction uses and non-construction uses. I find that to be uh bending towards uh business, uh construction and development and away from community. Um the it's the small users and the and the and the residents that will be impacted by that parity, if if that's what you're seeking. Um Bill, I think you're you might be a downtown property owner, and so this is something that actually might uh you might be involved in this permitting in a future date. So for me, there's a little bit of conflict here about um what the impacts are and and how it's going to impact you personally, perhaps. I'm not saying that you are conflicted on the issue, and I appreciate your perspective, but um I I know you you if you're downtown at all, you know what this encroachment does. You know, you know what the impact it is. Um it you know, just to give you just the the small version of it, uh all you gotta do is see the people that um normally are out uh taking pictures with beautiful Aspen Mountain in the background. They gotta find different locations because of kind of the encroachment that's going on. Um that's just a small example. These encroachments are um, they hurt. are, they hurt our fellow businesses downtown for singular pursuit, I would love to see something dealt with in this, but no change to this is not going in the right direction for our community, so I won't be supporting this this evening, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just one point of clarity, you two are a downtown property owner, so anything that might apply to me also applies to you in that comment, thanks.
Yeah, but, but not, not in the construction area, you know, so I would be one of those other users, but I'm not even thinking about that, I don't, I don't own my building.
No, but you own your unit just like I do, and there's no scenario which your building ever does any construction that requires a right-of-way permit?
It's cool, hey, if you wanna try to relate some kind of conflict, it's different, but the same if you want, I'm advocating on the other side of it, though, not on this side that you are, so, anyway, that's discussion, it's, there's a motion and a second, I hope everybody's clear on what the motion and the second are, can we have a roll call vote for the motion that's on the floor, please?
Counselor Doyle.
No.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Maritorie.
I'm a no, but that, and that is for the whole fee ordinance, just with those minor changes to that one section, couple lines, thank you very much.
Ordinance seventeen has passed.
Pardon, go ahead.
Ordinance seventeen has passed with those two amendments.
I wanted to provide information.
No, they're done, they're gone, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
As we're transitioning here, I'd like to open the possibility of reopening this, this topic of the parking and the encroachment at a future date.
I'll lend my support to that.
Yeah?
To, to the parking parity rate.
And, and encroachment?
Not, not encroachment, I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yeah.
That's why I paused.
I was like, wait, what? Okay, so Ward, you would like to revisit this conversation, are you, are you suggesting a work session in the new year?
Or an information packet.
Something, right?
Yeah, I want, I do, I do want clarity on equity in this, and I think even, Trish had suggested a ten percent increase, but in moving this forward, I just wanna get this done, and maybe in the new year, or at a future date.